The 30th, so it's pretty exciting to get a close up look at everything that's going on over there. I just want to set a reminder, all this scheduling and progress information, anytime you want is on the website, Islam Meadow MA.gov slash ELHS Building Project. That is constantly updated and all information. The aforementioned Oktoberfest at Brown Farm, another rousing success. Thanks to everybody that attended and had a hand in putting together the event. Sun shining atmosphere was one of community and family fun. Glorious Autumn Day, pony rides, bounce houses, arts and crafts, food and drink.
Goats.
Goats, all smiles. Everybody was all smiles.
All goats.
Oh, I said that I didn't say. Thanks to Donna Prather and her whole staff, volunteers, vendors, everyone that continue to make this event an amazing experience in showcasing Brown Farm. The Westcom Board of Directors appointed Penny Ryan as the new Executive Director at their meeting on October 16th. Penny's been serving as the interim director. Brings a tremendous energy to the position and it's filtered down through the entire organization. Work ethics been contagious and Westcom is blossoming into an efficient and professional organization. We look forward to a prosperous future under Penny's direction. The town received award letters for two grants. The municipal digital equity implementation grant, $64,950 for digital skills training through the library at three locations. Library, Senior Center, and the Housing Authority will be before you shortly for your acceptance. And the second is Massachusetts Downtown Initiative One Stop Grant, $30,000 paid directly to the consultant for a business improvement district, Phase One feasibility study. So we're excited about that. Brownstone Gardens turns 50 years old this year. First phase opened on November 1st, 1975 and contained 100 units for the elderly financed by the Massachusetts Housing Finance Authority. In 1985, Brownstone Two was constructed and contained 32 units and Brownstone Three in 1995 with another 40 units. All three buildings were designed by David Carlson and built by the local firm EA Grelia Construction and have been managed by Car Property since their inception. So happy birthday, Brownstone Gardens. And attached is the Phase One Report and Recommendations Memorandum from Spec Dempsey regarding the reimagining of the Rotary and Center Square that we talked about last time. Memo raises some interesting questions and talking points as we discuss as a community where we're headed. And I'm looking forward to that full conversation. Upcoming events, trunk or treat, October 30th here at the COA, 4:30 to 6:30. Coffrey, the Town Manager, November 5th at 10:30 right here at the COA. And I hope everybody has a safe and happy Halloween. That's it. If anybody has questions, well, I'll be here all night.
If you'd answer.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, seeing none. You have no communications respondents or announcements of name?
Oh, you know what? If I may, I don't mean to jump into a different one. I did receive an email from National Grid yesterday. They're starting their rollout of the Smart Meter Program. This had been something I don't remember if we mentioned it, but they'll be sending out mailers. There's an insert in one of the bills, like there's like a 60, 30 day, and then they'll do door hangers and stuff when it's, if you don't know what a smart meter is, it just sort of helps with the efficient use of electricity for all the customers. So I can attach that to my report so that it's in the, on the website. But my guess is you'll start seeing that literature come from National Grid in the coming weeks. So sorry to butt in, I forgot I wanted to mention that also.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Shouldn't throw it away.
Don't throw it away. Supposed to pay that one.
Okay, and we have no public hearings, so we'll move to orders of the day, financial matters. The first one is accepting donations from Oktoberfest.
I make a motion to accept the following donations for annual Islam Meadow Oktoberfest 2025 totaling $2,743 per Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Giftology and Steven Allen Jewelers, $600. The Pizza Shop, $600. Porter Road Pet Care Incorporated, $400. Munson Savings Bank, $250. A W Brown, $400. And Rent a Tent, $493.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She was just not. Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you to all of those people that made gracious donations for that event. Okay, next, kind of a combination of the next three items under financial matters. So we have appropriation for additional costs for the Porter Road project, followed by additional DPW projects for pump meter module inflow and infiltration. And then free cash from Mountain View Elementary School. But since all three of those kind of go in the same discussion, I'll let Tom introduce before we.
So naturally, I made the grandiose statement that we were going to not make free cash transfers before the tax hearing, last meeting. And here we are with a potential free cash transfer, just like I did with ARPA last year when I said we were never going to talk about ARPA again, and we had to talk about it the next meeting. So the reason that this is coming up is our, the bands for all these projects are coming due. And so because the rates are so good, we're going to permanently borrow for some or all of them, depending on this conversation. And that ratings call is happening on November 3rd, which would be prior to the next council meeting. So that's why we sort of bumped this conversation to this meeting. Most of the first one, the item two, those are projects that are being re-appropriated, meaning there's a balance in those projects that are completed. And that money from the sewer enterprise fund is being moved into the new project line item.
What exactly is the Porter Road project?
So there is a, you know how a couple of years ago, we put that, that big sewer meter at the end of North Main Street so that we could get an accurate count of our sewer flow instead of estimating what we pay to Springfield Water and Sewer? We also have a direct connect to Springfield through Porter Road. Feel free, Bruce, if I'm saying any of this wrong. We also have a line that goes into Springfield that there's a vault that we're going to meter that as well. So it's one more connection point to Springfield that we will not be estimating. We will be metering and paying actual use.
So did we already appropriate funds for, for this and we ran 100,000 short?
Yes.
I just don't remember.
Yeah, so.
Only Porter Road project I remember was the Culver.
Was the Culver, right.
And that was paid for by a grant.
Right.
Now, all of a sudden, I'm like Porter Road project.
Yeah.
Like another 100,000, I'm like, the grant's already covered it.
Yeah, so this is a, this is a project that needs additional funds that was approved through the capital plan. This Porter Road.
And what was the original? Do we know?
It came in higher than they were estimated at. And additional electrical services and utilities poles were also added to the project that were on.
I was just curious what the original cost was. Kim's looking it up. I know she.
Yeah, it's.
On the computer.
Cheapers. And the answer.
Road, it was 102,800.
Almost double.
So it's double.
Big difference.
Yeah. And again, so that's money.
And that's coming.
From the sewer, going to the sewer.
Yep.
So the other projects had been bonded?
No.
And that's what's left over?
Nope, they were banned. And instead of permanently borrowing, we're going to pay for them in total.
Through retained.
Through retained earnings.
Perfect.
So that's number three, those, the 158,000. And then the last piece, which of all the projects in the banned amount would be the only impact to the general fund, which was the modulars. And so as we're talking about what that amount is that we want to permanently borrow, because rather than roll the bands based on conversations we had with our bond counsel, Kim, Dawn, Rebecca, and I, the rates are very good for permanently borrowing right now at three and a half percent or so. And rather than borrow this amount of money, we'd save $560,000 in interest over the life of the loan or thereabouts. Not to mention our line item for debt in the general fund budget is declining, which is allowing us to spend more on capital. And if we borrowed this amount of money, we would have to add something like 150,000, 150,000 to that line item again. And that's would be sort of an increase and money we couldn't spend somewhere else. So again, like I said to Connor last night, this was more of a, it's like a choice that we have. We have to borrow. We have to do something because we started the project and we banned it so that we could have cash flow. And so we either borrow and spread that out over 20 years, or we take free cash and pay for that entire amount now and save that interest over the life of the loan. Again, the, if we don't do that, we just have to add that into the, the general fund budget in terms of debt. That's really the nuts and bolts of it. I'm sure there's questions, and again, Ralph's already smiling, and that's fine.
Directly out, man.
No, 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 of course there's questions. And again, it's no small amount of money to just appropriate. And so I want to make sure that you have all the information you need. And if there's any questions, obviously Kim's here as well. And we're happy to answer any of them. Again, this was our thought as the best plan of attack for this, for this money is to, to pay it all off now so that we're not paying 1.8 over 20 years.
I do have questions, but I want to give everyone a chance. Okay. 1.3 million is what we've already allocated. We already took a vote on it to spend that, correct?
Yep.
And that vote was to allocate the money or was it to specifically bond the money? Well, if it was to bond it, then don't we have to revoke that decision before we allocate out a free cash?
I don't think so, no.
Yeah.
Come on up, Kim. I'm guessing you're gonna have to answer one or more of these.
I'd get you up here.
No, because we already banned the money. So although we've already fulfilled that obligation.
Okay.
So now we can choose to use retained, well, like as in the other funds, we use retained earnings. We can choose to use free cash to cover it rather than permanently borrow.
Borrowing at three and a half percent would seem to make a lot of sense because the rate's so low, isn't it?
Yes, but we also have 13.3 million in free cash and.
Spend that.
I don't know what your intentions are for that. I mean, yes, it's a good time to borrow. So we could definitely borrow the money free, that money in free cash. And then you can use the free cash for anything else. We just wanted to give you what that picture looked like in terms of, you know, health insurance costs are going up significantly this year. Our excess levy is at about 1.6. And I'm thinking going into this year, we're probably going to have to dig into that a little bit. And slowly but surely, as we come closer to that excess levy, that becomes a budgeting issue for the town. So we're also looking at adding $150,000 to debt if we borrow this 1.3, which is now fighting with that budget as well. So we're just always looking for opportunities to kind of reduce the general fund budget if we can. So just giving you that information, you can choose to, you know, reduce the debt. I mean, choose not to increase the debt budget by putting this in there, also saving $560,000 over the course of it. Or you could choose to borrow it and we can move forward with that. And then the 13.3 is, you know, available for anything else.
So, so that was the point of having the conversation was we were always going to have to borrow it. We had to do something, right? And so is there a better option here? And of this, what was the, what was the total number to borrow for?
4.6.
4.6, 1.3 of which was general fund. The rest of it is split between sewer water and stormwater. So none of that three, the 3.3 would hit the general fund. We have to come up with the money somehow. And if we were going to borrow it, we'll just borrow it. That, that's what we planned to do anyway. Like if we didn't think we had enough free cash to make this kind of decision, we would just borrow it because that's what we'd have to do. So there is this other option though, that allows us to save this money in interest. And so naturally we put it in front of you to see what you thought.
Just to clarify, so we, this because I was confused, so this, we've already, we did this like about a year or so ago, right?
This, this money was, yes.
We will say.
Yep.
Yeah, we had originally appropriated like 800,000.
Right.
We had to come back and appropriate additional because
Right.
the cost was a lot more than what we had expected.
And so to make it even more confusing, that first part was permanently borrowed already. So it shows up on the list of our debt.
Which one?
Mountain View Modular, the first.
The first part of the.
Right, so even if you were to say spend this 1.3, you'd still see Mountain View Modular on the debt. Because that got borrowed.
Probably twice.
That got borrowed 21, 22?
I don't remember all of that.
It was a bit ago.
Three, four years.
Yeah, so maybe it was 22, 23, something like that. Again, just talking about the options of what we can do with our money and how we want to make it work for us. That this is where we're at.
So just a comment to the counselors. One of my thoughts was because we had so much free cash to allocate more towards roads this year, a large chunk. But if we're using some of it to do the school, that could cut down on what we can and can't do. Again, I'm not, I'm not against either way. Just trying to put options out there and our thought process down the road. Again, we still have, would you say 13 point?
13.
Million.
13.3.
13.3. The other thing that I do just want to bring up is that come August, September, around that time, we will have to go out and borrow again. It will be for the school and the auditorium, which is exempt. So that doesn't affect the general fund budget. But there will be borrowing in there for Maple Shades Roof. And that's an MSBA project. There will be a reimbursement, but I think that project is estimated at about 3 million. So do you know, I'm sorry, Tom, do you know what the reimbursement is?
No, they haven't, they haven't established that yet.
Okay.
They're still working through some of the parameters about if solar is, is going to be required. And so there, there's still a lot of questions before that comes out.
Okay.
So if we have to borrow again, is, can we add other items into that borrowing? Or is it just for the school that we, in other words, let's say we, as a council vote, hey, let's add $4 million. I think Long Meadow did 5 million for paving. Can that be added to the future bond?
It could, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we, that was a misconception at the beginning that that school borrowing had to be all by itself.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
They've answered all my questions. Well, not quite, don't go anywhere.
No, and again, it's just a question of what, what, what your comfort level is and what your idea for, for the whole pile of money, I don't mean to use that phrase, but if, if that 13.3 you were earmarking for something else, then we'll just spread out the 1.3 over the 20 years like we probably would have had to do in another year when we didn't have 13.3. It's just like a sort of your option, so to speak.
Does anyone have any?
I would just comment on the 13.3. And did we have any other thoughts about it? I would say I don't right now because I'm waiting to hear what you and Rebecca and Kim might have to, to say about that and what we, what we ought to consider.
Okay, okay.
I think a chunk, it's probably going to go towards our fiber. I would assume because the make ready has got to be coming close.
We're, we're, we're about a week, month overdue at this point. And so I apologize that there's been no update on that. We are still working through the logistics with the utility companies.
So, sorry, at this time, I think it makes sense to like their request and do it out of free cash. And then down the road, if we make the decision to spend the money and we need it, we can borrow it at that time.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of my thought too, is I think knowing that we have pretty healthy amount in free cash, it makes sense to save on the interest now. And we may, you know, take some for roads and other improvements out of free cash and still leave us with a healthy amount. But then any future project that we could envision over the next year, whether it's moving fiber along or whatever else may come up in the capital plan, maybe there's some leftover or maybe at that time it's appropriate to borrow that money in the future. But it doesn't make sense to borrow now and we don't really need to.
So I'm fine doing the, this project with free cash, but just on a note with the paving, could we start maybe looking at some different alternatives in terms of if we know we have four or five million dollars have been put towards paving, what we know we have coming in on chapter 90 money and potentially what we might look at in terms of borrowing to make a substantial kind of impact on it? Just could start looking at some different options for, you know, like a combination of free cash borrowing, chapter 90, and see how we can make one, maybe one big dent in the next couple of years.
Well, that was sort of a request I had had already for DPW. And I think we have sort of a robust list of roads that will be, will be coming. Again, we'll have to, we've got to plan accordingly. If, if it doesn't seem that Prospect and North Main are happening this fall, they're certainly not going to happen this winter. I just want to make sure we don't have too many projects going on at the same time because all these projects have to be managed.
Driving into each other.
Yeah, right, well.
A detour going into a detour.
Somebody needs to manage this project in order for it to be done right. And, and that, that takes a lot of time, obviously. So if we're paving too many roads at the same time, but I agree. And to answer your question, if I had my way, a lot of, a lot of that money is going to go, say, half to fiber, half to roads. Again, I'll, I'll always keep leaning back to the fiber because it will be a revenue stream when it's done, which is a very, very unlikely opportunity for a community to, to create a revenue stream sort of at this, at this point. But yes, the, certainly the roads program, where Bruce is working on capital right now. I know I see pre marks in a bunch of roads. Yeah, of course. Yeah, I see pre marks in a bunch of the roadways that I had mentioned to Bruce and Mark Berman, probably for coring. So I think that plan is sort of already underway. But I'm guessing, well, like I said, with that debt number coming out, so if our, our policy for capital is three to 5% of the budget net of debt, which is another reason to keep this debt number going down, that means we spend more money in the budget on capital. And then we add our reserves on top of it. Now we have this capital plan that continues to grow like it should. And so yes, to answer your question, I would love to have a robust, robust paving plan. And we're talking about possibly next year, you know, obviously the, the state will be doing North Main, excuse me, Summers Road, Prospect, Pleasant Streets on the list. Where I've seen the marks are the rest of Parker Street, where we left off, Fernwood, all the way to Meadowbrook and then Meadowbrook, which is terrible, and probably Handen Road out to the line. So that in and of itself is an enormous chunk. And again, like I said, the, when I say pre mark, I mean, they have to dig safe the marks and they have to locate the spots where the guys are going to drill the cores to see what we got there and what the design will be when we build the road. So that, that is underway. The roads are high up on the list. And again, I have fiber at 1A and roads at 1B. But I mean, that I think is where we make a huge investment this year.
And I think something like we've talked about too, when it comes to roads is in the past, we've just kind of thrown a blanket chunk of money at it, but we didn't really know what that was going to add up to completing a streetwise. But now that we have a better idea with the plan and then future plans that the DPW are putting together, we'll have a better picture of what amount that will take rather than just say, ah, what about 300,000?
An actual project estimate, so it's tangible and not just thrown into the account. And that sort of is the path that I had asked Bruce and Mark to go down and they're, they're already on it. So, so I'm excited to see what that looks like. And again, we, we've been getting a bit surprised that price is not as high as we thought they were going to be. So hopefully that trend continues. I know you guys, the DPW has been getting creative with our treatments. And so I'm excited to see what that is going to look like when capital. You're done with capital already, probably, but I think everybody else, everybody else has till November 15th to, to submit. But yeah, that, that is something that we're going to key in on the, on this capital plan for sure.
So one last follow up. Thank you for, for talking because it gave me the opportunity to come up with it. Our investment income, I know this year we had an, an extreme amount. Basically interest on the money that's been sitting there. I'm just curious, a percentage was, what percentage are we earning? Is it 5%? And so if we borrow at, you know, three and a half, does it make more sense to leave it invested at 5?
So it's really hard to answer that question because all of the money is in so many different places. A lot of it that's invested, I mean, if it's in a CD, we're probably earning about 5%. If it's in investments, we're probably earning more than that. So yes, by borrowing it, you're making more on it than what we're paying on it. And I, and for a larger project, something that's going to last a year, I would say that makes sense. I just don't know how long this project is going to last. So like, how many months you're really going to be able to hold that money and make interest on it?
Do we, do, do we have a, like substantial completion date on the modulars? Yeah. They just did demo, so I don't know what.
Oh, the water mains going, it'll be ready for next school year, so it'll probably take the, the rest of the year.
Probably not a good idea based on taxes, towns to tax people, hold their money just to make interest on it. That's like a byproduct. It's not like myself, my personal investments, if I'm looking at buying a car, I look at, well, geez, my investments are making 8%, I'm paying 3%, that's a net profit of 5%. I'm not sure that's the way the town can really assess it.
I mean, I think it depends on what the intent was. The intent was to borrow the money and you want to do that. And the benefit from borrowing it and the timeframe that we have is that we're going to earn more than we're spending. And I don't see an issue with that.
There's always Vegas.
Any other questions or comments? It seems like, I don't want to speak for anyone, but it seems like the consensus is that we would still move forward with the free cash and then if that's the case, we can take the motions in order.
You ready for?
I am.
I'll move as a tenant.
I'll move that the town appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to pay additional costs of the Porter Road project. And that to meet this appropriation, set amount shall be transferred from the following balances of amounts borrowed for the various projects that have been completed and for which no financial liability liability remains as authorized by General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty. Date of order, May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, amount of five hundred and seventy-four dollars. No, I'm sorry, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the sewer project amount to be re-appropriated fifty thousand dollars. May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, amount authorized a hundred thousand, project for sewer and amount to be appropriate, re-appropriated fifty thousand.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Then next we have appropriating a hundred fifty-eight thousand and nineteen cents for three projects.
I make a motion to appropriate from sewer retained earnings seventy-three thousand nine hundred thirty-one to fund three, four, two, zero, 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 nine Dawes in Linwood Pump, sixty-nine thousand to fund three, four, two, two, zero, one, three meter modules and fifteen thousand sixty-nine and nineteen cents to fund three, four, two, two, zero, one, four inflow and infiltration.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And last appropriating from free cash.
I make a motion to appropriate one million, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, eight, three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for free cash for count number three, four, two, two, zero, one, two, Mountain View Elementary School modular classroom.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kim, for the explanation as well. Next, we have approval of our October fourteenth meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Old business, we had the transparency bylaw update.
Um, so uh, we we got to work on this uh almost immediately the other night. Um, so if you click on the transparency tab now, we've begun populating all the necessary uh contracts. Um, and payroll from FY twenty-four, which was everybody in town, there's a big spreadsheet that uh brings it to another link, but uh we're still waiting for a few, uh, I think a few contracts from the schools. Uh, Audra's been working with them, uh, getting all that information switched over and then loaded into the onto the website. Um, again, uh, we got it all on the quote unquote transparency tab, um, whether or not it's uh in a way that uh pleases your eyes or not, uh, is something that we can continue to work on. Again, the there's a few icons on here, some that were already there. Uh, contracts, uh, open payroll, open checkbook, annual town reports, financial reports. Um, again, all on there sort of in one place so that um for for ease of viewership, which I guess was the whole point of the transparency law. Um, so anyway, uh, I don't know if there's any other questions. Again, we'll continue to uh, upload as we get the information and then update as the new information comes in. Uh, obviously, a lot of these contracts uh get renewed from time to time. Um, and um, I think what by March, we were gonna have an updated uh wage sheet um, updated as well. So um, thank you for the push. Uh, and uh, that that's starting to look pretty good.
Great. Yeah, I just looked at it while you were imagining, so I do see more in there. Any other comments or questions?
So just to comment, um, and this is for the residents, if you go to the uh East Long Metal website and click on the tab that says government, that's where you'll find the transparency tab. And you click on the transparency and it'll bring you to all the information. Um, very nice. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sorry it took so long.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
And next, under new business, we have discussing the proposed Centertown District Bylaw. Um, we did receive a memo from our planning director, Rob Wachilla, which I'll just quickly read that said, uh, Dear Ms. Carglietti, on behalf of the planning board, I wish to move forward and propose zoning amendment for the town council's initial consideration and review. The proposed amendments pertain to creating a new mixed-use zoning district with relative regulations and amending the zoning map. The proposed additional language would be inserted into section four fifty dash two uh, four fifty five point six, four fifty five point twelve, newly proposed section four fifty eleven point two, table three dash one and table three dash two. Text in blue indicates language to be included, while red strike through text indicates language to be deleted. Text highlighted in yellow indicates language intentionally singled out in order to promote further discussion. The board hopes that the town council will consider moving this proposal forward and to jumpstart the public hearing process on behalf of the board, Robert Wachilla, Director of Planning, and that was submitted to us on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Uh, since it's not like a first reading on behalf of the council, we won't read through like we normally would the entire attachment, but it is on file with the clerk, should anyone wish to see what the contents of that are so far. Um, but then I'll turn it over to Tom to see if there's any other introduction that you wish to make.
Uh, well, first of all, I'll I'll or sort of pass along Rob's apologies. Uh, he had a conflict this evening, so uh yes, again, I think I always use this phrase, he has to watch me muddle through. Um, so this, most of the bylaw is uh the fruit of um our exercise with PVPC of the forty R feasibility grant project. Uh, they provided us with uh sort of a draft bylaw, uh, which Rob um through meeting with Rebecca and I, uh, sort of crafted the the proposed language for um you know, based on uh what what our conversations we had with the public, uh, steering committee members, uh, other departments. Um, proposed uh or possible developers in town uh to sort of get their input on uh, what what kind of projects they could do, um, what what sort of return on investment uh, key points there were. Um, and again, uh, putting this forward to to sort of start the process and asking for a recommendation to the planning board. Um, you know, to to get their public hearing process going. Um, is there anything else that you wanna add, Rebecca?
Great. So with that overview, are there any discussion points? Ralph?
Oh, thank you. Um, so as you know, I'm on um the bylaw review committee. And I would ask that we um put this off at least for a few months until the bylaw review committee finishes its task of going through. Um, we haven't even reached the zoning aspect. Um, we already have a zoning diagnostic report, which has given us uh multiple issues to address under it. And in the middle of that, trying to add a Centertown District, um, I just feel it's too much all at once. Um, I would rather see us uh finish our job that's mandated under the charter, um, add the zoning diagnostic in, get that voted on, and then we can adopt this into whatever new form our zoning bylaws show us um to try and and do everything at once. I mean, as it is between this report um and doing the bylaw review, it's a lot. Um, I just, I think it's too much to ask, especially on one committee like this, and I think it makes no sense to adopt it, and then we come back and say, okay, well, we're gonna change all of this to this, and it just doesn't coincide. Um, that's my thoughts on it. And I'm not against, I mean, I started reading through and all, and I'm not against what they're looking to do. I just think the timing, if we could postpone it a little bit, would be advantageous to our subcommittee.
You know, you and I attended that meeting where they gave the the presentation or the 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 recommendations for what we should work on. And it was a lot more involved than I anticipated, so I didn't know this was a concern, but it makes sense. This is, there's a lot of detail in this, too, that deserves, you know, attention, so um I don't know what we would do if we put it off for a few months if we, you know. Um, that's up to you.
Any other thoughts?
Just a fuck, I think, to add to Marilyn's comments, you know, one of the things that struck me in that last bylaw committee meeting was the amount of cleanup work that needs to be done in the existing bylaw, there's gonna be a cost of doing so. To add something, I think of this magnitude to that before that process is hasn't even really gotten started yet. Just seems it's it's the kind of, it would make things a little more convoluted, I think, than they need to be at this point, and to just to hold off to see what comes out of that process, to see if we need to do anything with this bylaw before we really start drilling into it, in terms of cleaning it up or making it more in uniform, what may change in our existing bylaws might make a little more sense. I was anticipating what the folks from that we hired to do the 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 cleanup work presented to us. Um, there's
Zoning diagnostic.
Yes, thank you. There's a there's tremendous amount to it.
Amazing. Um, and a lot of great suggestions and uh but a lot of work that's gonna need to be done by our subcommittee in order to to mesh everything together the way we need to, and a lot of it's gonna have to be in conjunction with the planning board at the same time.
There's a lot in the diagnostic report that has to do with cleaning up inconsistencies and things that are mentioned in one bylaw but might contradict another bylaw, and I wouldn't wanna see putting something this large into that that may further complicate just that effort alone.
I'm torn, cuz I agree that I don't wanna make it more complicated or hard to to do without having done that other cleanup effort first. But I also think that this is gonna be like a long enough process for this bylaw, too, and I'd hate to make that like start even later, knowing that it'll take a while before that part completes. But then I also know that we still, as a council, probably at a future meeting, have to reconcile how we even wanna move forward with those bylaw changes, given that the ballot question failed at our last elect, if we attempt that again and try to get a clear message out about it, cuz if that doesn't succeed, I'm not even sure that any of our bylaw cleanup efforts will actually happen.
So part of my concern is, once we refer this to the planning board, it starts a clock. And we only have a certain amount of time to hold uh public hearings and stuff on it, so I'd rather not start the clock and just say, hey, let's give us a few months to try and get through most of this.
Do you have a deadline?
What 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 is the time?
They have um sixty days to open a public hearing, but then the public hearing could be continued on and on, and then there's
Which I'm sure that the conversation about this will continue on and on. Uh, okay, but but sixty days would start would start that clock, okay?
Yeah, but I do think there was something in there that we always forget about that if the planning board doesn't close their public hearing and make a recommendation to us, and I forget what the timeline is, we still have to hold a public hearing and vote on it, too, so it's not like we have unlimited
Unlimited times.
With the timeline, once the planning board closes their nomination, they have a certain number of days to forward, I'm sorry. Once the planning board closes their hearing, they have a certain number of days to make a recommendation over to you. And if they don't, then you can move forward with your process, close your hearing and deliberate.
Right, but I thought there was one in there, too, that no matter when they close it or if they didn't close it in time, we still had to hold one.
There's no closing it in time, it's just a matter of getting a recommendation over to you once the hearing portion is closed. So you could continue, once you open the hearing, you have to continue. You can continue on and on. Once you close the, once the planning board closes their hearing, they'll forward a recommendation over to council, council, it would be advised, leaves their hearing open until they receive that recommendation. And then you can deliberate on that recommendation in public hearing and make a decision. I do also want to note that I like
I couldn't hear half of it.
Yes.
I'll just also note that I think that the way that the planning board and the council um had a joint meeting to discuss forty R and the direction that we were going in, that was very productive. Um, I think there's a, there's a hope that planning and council, or maybe planning matter subcommittee as a representative body of the council or meeting jointly through this process. Um, because I think that it makes for a more productive discussion if both bodies are there, hearing the comments that are raised over time. Um, I think it's also more transparent for the public, and whether it's residents or developers or anyone who has an interest in this issue. If you have a full public hearing process for planning board and then a full public hearing process for council and they're separate, it feels a little bit um confusing for people to weigh in and come to the table with their thoughts. And then if they made it over here, do they have to come to the planning uh to the council after the planning board to make the same points? Um, I think it makes the the process um like overly complicated for the public to participate in, and it also creates um, what I wanna say, uh, an opportunity for two different decision-making bodies to make decisions in sort of a vacuum from one another, as opposed to being able to understand some of the rationale or thought that went into, you know, the the version that's being crafted and considered along the way. Um, I think that the the two boards would do well to work together through the public hearing process, and then at some point, planning closes theirs makes her, and then in in the same way that the normal process would be followed, where they close their hearing, they make their recommendation, council's hearing is remained um left open, so you can deliberate on the recommendation. And then once you make your amendment, you would forward a final version to the full council from either the subcommittee or the full council.
May I, I I know there's a section in the bylaw that addresses site plan review and special permit can be taken up in the same evening, so that the developer who's making the representation doesn't have to bring all the people twice.
Yes.
I'm not sure how it deals with separate public hearings for planning board and the town council with respect to how the statute would look at that.
It's, I would say it's it's governed by forty A, which is the
Does it say specifically that you can have both together?
They wouldn't, they wouldn't be a single public hearing, they'd be two public hearings, so so the
On the same, at the same time.
Yes, okay. So they would be noticed separately for the same time and place, and then whoever's representing the planning board would have to open their public hearing. Council or sub subcommittee of the council would have to open their um public hearing, and they're just taking place at the same time in the same place. But they are independent bodies making independent decisions, however, the the opportunity for deliberation across bodies is possible.
And if a, whether it be planning board or the council, um, moves to um, postpone a decision for another night to take things to this, um, can we do that?
You can, you can continue.
I'm not saying, I'm not against it, it's just, it's a, it's an interesting concept.
Yep, so you can, um, both bodies, once they open the hearing, they can continue their hearing to any date certain. Um, they may decide to continue it onto the same date and continue to meet, quote unquote, jointly to work through the details, or if there was some reason where there was a conflict in scheduling, you could have them continue to a separate, separate dates and then reconvene on a later date. It it all, it all just has to happen. Um, your your public hearing, once it's opened, has to be continued to a date certain. Each board is making their decisions separately, but they will be able to communicate to facilitate more collaboration and coordination. And I think there's a lot of um value there for the for the bodies and then also And I think there's a lot of um, value there for the, for the bodies and then also for the public. Would this help you?
So I, I would agree that process makes sense. I just don't think we should even start down that process, and that's why I mentioned this tonight. Um, and like I said, it's just it's so much going on already to throw something that's this big into it, because this isn't just, um, you know, a, a simple little zone change. Hey, we're changing this word or that word. Um, this is a whole new district. Um, and I just yeah, my feeling is if we could just postpone it temporarily, I'm not saying throw it out the window um, by any means, because I, I definitely think uh, this is something that we need. But I'd just like to get through some of the things we already have going.
Just so Marilyn and Karen, I mean, you're now the, some of the with the other process with the bylaw review committee, there may be a lot of conversation needed. I said with the planning board and the council, just in regards to what the intent of some of these bylaws are. Does that even, it's not clear in the current, according to our consultant, they're not, it's not clear in our bylaws, what the intent of some of these things are. So maybe you have to have a lot of conversations amongst this body, which may influence how we look at this bylaw once we get more educated and get down that process of how we look at this. So we might, doing it on a dual track might be problematic, because we might be changing some stuff with purposeful intent in the existing bylaws that may, I'm guessing, conflict with the intent of this bylaw. It just it seems like a lot, it'd be difficult to have those multiple conversations at the same time in separate hearings in, you know, in a public setting with another body altogether. So it just, it just seems like, I agree, I think it just seems like a lot to to bite off all at once here.
Something we could consider, um, knowing that the consultants you know, uh, kind of left us with homework uh, about the general policy questions. They would do all the technical, you know, cleanup and formatting, but we still had to figure out what kind of policy direction we might want to, to answer, even though we may both as the council and planning board not have weighed in on the contents of a drafted bylaw, we could, you know,
They've been
That towards the direction of
They've, they've been through it.
The policy.
So we met, uh, Rob and I met with the consultants on Monday to sort of debrief about the last bylaw review committee meeting. And I think that Rob was encouraging the consultant to um, do some survey work with the community. Um, and then the thought was that those results, survey results were pre-presented to planning board and town council, hopefully in some sort of joint session, maybe they're invited into the chambers here a-again. Um, but that way you could um, I, I guess on the policy recommendations, see sort of like thermometer reads on where the public is interested. And then also it creates a single venue for the, the public to weigh in at a public meeting. But then also you would be able to sort of rank order the substantive policy changes that you'd want to make. But I think at the end of the day, those policy changes are going to need to be sort of like ticked off one by one. Whereas the technical review and the grammatical sort of changes, um, you'll have a package and although you probably have to um, list each change in an agenda. There's, there shouldn't be anything standing in the way of adopting technical changes as a package. Once they make it on to this body's agenda, because you are the you're the commit, you're the body that makes the zoning bylaws. So any technical review that the um, consultant provides you can be adopted through the normal sort of bylaw change process here. Um, it would say, you know, multiple amendments to, like you listed legally, um, with an advertisement that said like multiple changes to chapter four fifty of the zoning bylaw. And then you'd have some sort of like document that listed all the changes, but you could while you have to list them out, you could largely vote on them as a package.
I'm not sure about that under our charter, because it's, it's very specific. You can make one change on one item. Um, and we did that purposely, and that's why we went for charter change to allow us to do multiple things at once. And the town said, yeah, no, we don't want you to do that. You're gonna be sneaking things through or something. I don't know what the thought process was.
They're still listed individually and you're still reading them in individually, but you can vote on them as a package, or if somebody is like upset about like one item, you could probably pull them out.
I, I understand what you're saying. That's what we did the first time with the charter amendment. Um, but even the attorney was very specific on what we could try to group together and what we couldn't. And um, but that, that's down the road. Um, I mean, like I said, my thought process is just we've got a lot on the table for a subcommittee right now, and I'm just asking for a few months additional to clean up what we have before we jump into this.
When do you anticipate, the chair? That your committee would be done? My recollection is, did, was there originally a deadline? March, okay. And I'm hearing, I'm sensing that that's not going to be feasible.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday, uh,
Really opened our eyes and we may have to reengage with them and come back to the council for an additional appropriation to maybe have them engage in doing more work. Um, which would be a more of a parallel track to the other bylaws we're currently reviewing. So it may expedite that process a little bit, but it's, if we have to take that on, on its own, it's substantial.
So the general bylaw portion, I believe we're
More than halfway through, I mean.
Yeah, we're over three quarters of the way through it. Um, and again, we've had to divert a few areas to different departments, um, to try and get their opinion and their thoughts on hey, what's the best way to go forwards with this? You know, I don't think, um, like in the health department listing, um, you know, bulls in there when you mean breed a dog, you can't just say bulls. Just doesn't work because everyone's thinking how, and it's like, no, 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 this was actually for bulldogs, but because there's so many within that, that so, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts in it and uh, and I know Tom's had a list of them that, that Ryan's forwarded over to you.
I do.
I think, oh, go ahead. Oh, I was just gonna say, sort of as like an observation, it, it sort of reminded me when I was reading this of like when we did the mixed use bylaw. Uh, and I remember having been a part of it, and a few people in the days here being a part of that, that like, I think was over a year maybe in total between when we first started it. So I do, notwithstanding what's already been said, I'd be open to starting it soon. I do understand the argument of like not, I would not want this hypothetically to be decided upon, of course, before you guys finished. But maybe doing it a little bit on a dual track, I don't think would necessarily, um, you know, mess anything up in a, in a major way. Be, just being mindful of that, I feel like this will probably attract a decent amount of public attention, being that it's a very public area. People have a lot of views on you know, housing and what type of housing we want and whatnot. So I think it'll take at least a couple of months, maybe, maybe closer to that year timeline that we had with mixed use. So, you know, we could be if we, the later we start, it could be going, you know, well into, later on into, you know, the decade. So, but I, I do agree. I mean, I don't want to like, this is a big thing. So we shouldn't necessarily um, put something big in there before making all of these what will probably be substantial changes that you guys will offer. So just
So could we move this uh, agenda item to our December, our first meeting in December?
Yeah.
And at that point, um, hopefully the bylaw committee will probably be through the general bylaws and all, and make our recommendation at that point.
I also think we'll have a better idea from the consultant where we're at and what we need.
And what the timeline would be, if you guys would need more time.
No, I think that's good in the middle. That way they were not waiting until we're completely done, but we can reevaluate and hopefully kind of as that one's ramping down, we can ramp this one up and
My season's over and I could spend a lot more time.
And then you can do Saturday, Sunday.
Exactly.
While you're in Boston.
Yeah.
Although I may miss that December meeting.
Cause your other seasons, yes.
Do you need a motion or?
Motion to the table?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Post, postpone or?
December, first meeting in December.
A motion's been made and seconded to attend this topic until our first meeting in December. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Post, motion passes.
Thank you. Probably already did the next.
Yeah, we basically talked about our uh, bylaw review committee update. All I was gonna mention on that was that we had the presentation from our um, consultant who presented the diagnostic report and kind of presented two two additional tracks there. One was the grammatical and formatting and just structural changes. And also trying to gain some clarity around what was currently in there. Rationale, if we had any for what some of it meant or what it was intending. And then the second half of it, which was more the to be determined stuff is the, you know, general policy questions. Are there things that we like that we want to keep? Are there things that we want to add that they could consider drafting something? There's anything I'm missing, feel free to add.
They're coming up with some of the policy questions, if I remember correctly. They're gonna come up with purpose questions and stuff. Um, that we as a body and the planning board should be looking at um, for going forwards with it. I think there was, like you said, the technical and then the purpose that they were gonna craft. Um, I know Rob had mentioned to them something about a uh, public outreach uh, portion of it.
That, that would be the survey component.
That would be the survey component, okay.
Yeah, I think that mostly covers. Hey, then next we have our FY twenty five metrics from the Department of Public Works.
How bad are our roads?
Think too long. Oh, they're pretty bad. Well, thank you all for having me this evening. Um, you guys all have the report I put together for you. Um, there's a lot of information in here.
A lot of information not in there.
And there's a lot of in there. So uh, please be patient as we go through this, um, through the chair. Do you want me to just to start off from the beginning? We'll just go through each section. You guys can ask questions once I have presented it to you. We can just go that way. All right, sounds good. Um, so the first uh, portion of this report is uh, about our work order system. Um, in twenty twenty four, we switched our work order system from three one one to the open gov system. As you can see in the metric, everything used to be put under highway. Um, so you can see in FY twenty four, about sixteen hundred work orders. Um, and then we had a separate work order system for um, our building maintenance only. That's um, that system did all our buildings and our fleet maintenance. Um, so you can see in there in FY twenty four, about thirteen hundred under the building maintenance, sixteen hundred under parks and highway. Uh, please keep in mind, as you look at the building maintenance for FY twenty four, there was a lot of duplicates that year. So on average, we typically are about six fifty to seven hundred work orders in the building maintenance division. I did, did look at previous year's reports, so that is on track um, for this year for FY twenty five. Um, so for FY twenty five, um, we did get that new system in uh, December of twenty twenty four. We're still playing with it, uh, putting in more data. Um, and this typically takes a, a few years to get all the uh, required data in the system. It took me about five years to set up the uh, the impulse system. And I believe Kathy um, was a part of that system in the beginning. Um, so we're doing a lot more. We're doing a lot more tracking uh, moving forward. So as of today, um, through all the different divisions, about three thousand ninety, uh, three thousand and ninety nine work orders excluding the building maintenance side of things. Um, but we're tracking material costs now. We're uh, tracking labor costs. Um, preventive maintenance costs, all those items are in the system now. And you can see that in the back of the report, there's a dashboard. Um, it kind of gives you, and this can be adjusted accordingly. Um, it tracks all our costs and everything else in each division. Um, any questions on that right now?
Just curious, under the work orders. So let's say, um, let's say Park has a faucet that's leaking. And the principal calls you and says, or puts in a work order, hey, the faucet's leaking. And then the vice principal puts in uh, a work order that says, hey, that faucet's leaking. Does that count as one work order? Is it one job or does that count as two work orders?
Right. So that's what had happened in FY twenty four, when we got our new uh, new facilities person in. They expanded the people uh, submitting work orders. So we typically try to just have the department head or a principal or their designee um, one person um, entering work orders for each division or each department.
And if it doesn't get addressed quick enough, do they do multiple work orders for the same project?
And sometimes they do, yes. Uh, but part of this system as well, the previous system didn't email that person when you entered a work order system through three one one like impulse did. So when you entered a work order, when it was converted to a work order, so it uh, signed a task, then it's converted to a work order and then that work order is then emailed um, um, to that person who requested it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like I said, if there's multiple for the same job.
Right. And typically
Sometimes that skews the numbers.
It does, it does, but this
Orders, well.
Right.
One faucet.
Right, yeah. So it's, that's part of the manager's uh, uh, job as well to make sure there's no
I wasn't sure if the new software.
It, yeah, no, it doesn't differentiate between, yeah.
Twelve jobs, but forty work.
Right, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any further questions?
Not yet.
No, okay. Um, under the highway divisions, we continue to uh, uh, well, over this past summer, we're working on the Summers Road and Prospect Street. Uh, we repaired roughly about sixty seven catch basins and on Summers Road uh, forty storm drain manholes in order to get ready for the paving for, for this upcoming Yeah, for this fall, I was go, I was hoping fall, um, but unfortunately it's, it didn't happen now. Um, so we continue uh, to wait for the, for the call from Mass DOT to get that project going. Uh, we're continuing to roadside easement maintenance, roadside mowing completed uh, twice a season. Easements clearing has begun and will continue uh, through the, through the winter months, more specifically when the ground freezes. So that's when we do our sewer easements through the uh, through a lot of the wetland areas or the really, really wet spots um, in town. So we wait for the ground to freeze, get in there with our bobcats and clean those areas. So if we do need access to clean manholes and things like that, we're able to access those areas. Um, our winter operations um, are in progress. We have five Sanders um, base already. We've already procured all our winter salt and we're gonna be ordering that salt uh, November first. Um, so we're ready to go. Um, pavement management plan has been completed. I believe you've all received a copy of that. Um, and also with that, our upcoming needs is about thirty million dollars in backlog in pavement management. Any questions? Um, you can see from that report, um, that you did receive, it's, it's very uh, comprehensive. Um, it's a great guide for, for us to use uh, moving forward. But also keep in mind, uh, we we can't take all that information and just go by that as well. Um, as you all well know, uh, when we do water main work, um, storm drain work or anything like that, we typically come back and then pave that road a year later. So sometimes we, we try to marry those, those things together, you know, with the condition of the road in our infrastructure. So just keep that in mind as we do infrastructure as well. Uh, we, we typically pave those uh, roads a year or two later.
One of the few sort of mandates, five or eight years ago, whenever it was, the asset management plans for water and sewers were required by DEP, which, you know, was a sort of this expense that you didn't see coming. But now we have this matrix of, matrix of projects that, you know, one sort of prevents the other from happening for a couple of years. That water mains coming up. And so you don't want to pave on this side of that water main project. You want to pave on this side. So um, there, there's quite a lot of information that.
Yeah, and I tell people that is uh, as well when residents call, I I agree with them that a lot of our roads are in bad condition, but we need to look at the infrastructure, uh, infrastructure as well underneath the road before we pave it as well. So keep that in mind.
So Bruce, through the chair, that report that came out uh was extremely in depth. And let's say P's Road, it broke it into like eight sections. Well, this section, you know, maybe they uh recommended a complete rehab um basin and everything. Did they come up with that based on coring or just visual look?
That's a great question.
And hey, we're gonna go out and do certain cores on streets and wasn't sure if that's already been done and that's why they chose.
I don't believe core sampling was part of that process. I'm not sure.
No, typically it would be visual inspection. Uh, 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 experienced sort of pavement surveyor can tell by the deflection and or cracking what that what the base most likely needs, right? Like, what does the repair look like, right? So the coring is twofold now, approves it.
Exactly.
And it helps with the mix design. Mark has been working in bold in place recycling where the whole train of trucks is pulling it up and putting it back down, but injecting a mix based on the data of what's pulled out of the ground.
Okay.
It's pretty cool.
Yes, I watched it um during uh Westwood.
Westwood, yeah, it was, yeah, I was sad I missed it. I kind of was. I miss my boots.
Um, on the next page of your report, under the water and sewer division, um, I'm gonna skip reading this whole thing. Um, but get into lead service line inventory, where we are with that. Um, so currently our lead service line investigations, we have completed a hundred and seventy four vacuum excavations completed to date. Um, six thousand two hundred and fifty four service fall fall within the pre nineteen eighty six lead ban category. So on the public service lines, um four thousand and five confirmed non-led galvanized uh for sixty four percent. And then the unknowns are two thousand two hundred and forty nine. On the private side of things, uh we have three thousand four hundred and ten confirmed non-led and two thousand eight hundred and forty four unknowns. Questions?
About the known ones. So.
Well, if they're known, they've been marked as non-led.
Or have we run into any that were led that had to be redone?
We have only run into one property with lead.
That's a good.
That's it so far.
Extremely good.
Um, just to just to um explain it a little further, um, the public service lines is the the portion that the town owns. So that's the curb stop to the water main. And then from the curb stop to the meter is the resident side of things, and that's private. Okay, so we have roughly five thousand ninety three left to go. So we're gonna, it's gonna be a few years um to get this whole project um completed. Okay? Any further questions? No, good. Uh, regulatory compliance and updates for the uh water division tier one publication notice plan uh for lead and copper through mass DEP requirements. Um, it's going from uh point zero one five parts per billion and then in twenty twenty seven, it's gonna be going to point zero one zero zero parts per billion. Um, and copper is going uh from uh coppers at one point three milligrams per liter. Um, under tier one public notification plan for total coliform and E coli, um, that's gonna be changing as well. Um, for E coli, it's zero. It's always been zero. That hasn't changed, but it's about the reporting uh requirement for that. Um, and we're also uh underway for our water and sewer rate study. Um, hopefully be done by the end of this year in order to go with that tier base system. So that'll be coming uh in front of you.
Something we talked about, uh I think briefly during the budget process last year about how we wanna.
Yeah, for people that use more water, give more basically what it comes down to. Um, any questions on any of that? No? Um, capital project and system improvements, the re- rehabilitation of the Chestnut Water Pumping Station is underway. Um, our sewer shed E wastewater meter vault pit.
Cross order.
A as well with tie and bind. Um, the replacement of the Kingman worthy Garland, Donald and Purge Niagara and Young Street Water Main is complete. That was done, I believe, in A of this year. Um, our manhole ceiling project was completed as well, and that's our INI. So that's inflow and infiltration, keeping the water out of our sewer system and because we pay to treat that that clean water. So that's why we we want to keep that from coming into our system. Um, our PLC replacement project for fiber optic stations is completed as well. And our new wastewater pump installation at Linwood um at Linwood Pump Station is also complete. Um, I'm co- ongoing uh subdivision and site inspections um are continuing at Oakwood Estates, Happy Acres and at the High School Project. Um, routine maintenance and operations, um annual hydrant flushing program, water meter change outs, dig safe mark outs, valve exercising program, emergency water and sewer ser- services, sewer main jetting and cleaning, camera inspections of wastewater systems, drinking water sampling for mass DEP requirements, maintenance of seventeen wastewater wastewater pumping stations and two drinking water pumping stations. Any questions?
We um, it's been a while since I looked at the sheet, so forgive me. I won't put you on the spot, but when we do the Porter Road uh connection to Springfield, there's really only one other major one right at Franconia.
Yes, and that's right in the middle of the golf course.
Yeah, that that, yeah, we're not doing that during the summer.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
And that, those three like consisted of like almost ninety five, like we have a weird connection on like Forest Hills, right? There's like three houses that.
Yeah, but we ended up taking those border accounts and gave those back to Springfield. So they gave us a few um uh customers and we took a few customers per our contract.
Didn't have to, so they didn't have to.
Yeah.
So we had a reporting situation where our water reads had to be.
Given to Springfield.
They could bill correctly and vice versa.
Yep.
Because the towns were on water lines in different towns. And anyway, so again, this was when we started this, that whole, the big one in North Main Street was to have an accurate number that Springfield Water and Sewer is charging us for sewer instead of this estimate that.
Right.
Was hard to reconcile, we'll just say.
Yes.
Uh, so we're we're we'll be basically paying, we'll be, once we do Franconia, we'll be paying for what we're actually sending to Springfield.
On that, have we found with the ones that we've done so far, like based off of what they had been estimating and billing us at previously versus what the actual number is now?
Pretty close. They're pretty close because what had happened in the past, the previous superintendent uh put some um the temporary meters they put in manholes just to gather that information. So it was done through uh various manholes throughout town. Um, so it is pretty close, but our usage should be going down. Um, and never mind that with our INI and everything else we're doing as well. So um, but until we have all that data all together, we're not gonna know. So, great questions.
That um station at Franconia, is that the one you can see from Dwight Road that's right near the brook?
That's yes, but that's not our station. That's Springfield Station. We just connect. It's like an eighteen or twenty four inch main that runs through that golf course.
And so, so if that's not the building, is there a different one on the course somewhere that is ours that has to be done or is?
Don't have a building.
Don't have one. We just, we just gravity connect to them.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Right next to the brook.
Yep. A lot of our pipes are in the brooks because the.
That's the low point.
Yeah, it is.
That's where all the storm drainage goes. Yeah. Everything flows downhill.
Okay, um, so under com- uh compliance reporting, we have a lot of that going on in the department. SDP requires water tank inspection. So we get an ROV, we hire a company, goes in, does an inspection, whatever sediment uh depths are at the tank, and if it meets a certain requirement, we have to take out that sediment. They check for um chipped paint and other things within the tank, but that happens every three years. Um, so we're in good shape on that one. Uh, we do com- uh completed EPA and DEP mandated update on wastewater O and M manuals every year. Uh, we also do public notifications for our UCMR five water samples. Um, completed inflow and infiltration reports, EP EPA, mass DEP and Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Uh, we did our annual statistical report for mass uh DEP as well. Complete our consumer confidence report for mass DEP. You guys get that letter typically around June uh of every year or early July. Um, our disinfection byproduct rules, our public notifications, October of twenty twenty five. We've been doing pretty good on our HAA's. Um, so we're getting hits here and there, but we we've been working uh closely with Springfield on giving us the required data, how much chlorine they're adding, so we can adjust ours and things like that. So um, we are seeing light at the end of the tunnel. So we're hoping in uh by twenty twenty eight, when the full plant uh goes online for Springfield, this should combat our issue. We do, uh, we are working on a backup plan as well. Uh, we did receive a notice of non-compliance because of how many um uh MCLs we did receive over since two thousand eighteen, when this this initial uh problem kept happening uh over and over. So we are working on another plan that you'll be seeing in your capital plan um for this year.
Spoiler alert.
Yeah. Um, talk.
Springfield Water and Sewer, that's the Cobble Mountain Reservoir and infiltration.
Yes.
Of millions of dollars they're putting in.
Millions and millions of, yes.
So we're hoping by the time they get it done that we have clean water.
Right, yes.
Always clean, Ralph.
Yeah, and never mind that. It it's so funny. Well, I have this argument. Well, I don't have this argument with mass DEP, but I I sit there and and we get these samples right at Harkness is typically where we feel, where we fail these these tests. So it's right at the tap when it comes over the city line. And we are responsible at that time for that that water. It just uh um, it just doesn't make sense to me. That's how we get it, but we have to do all the reporting.
The testing is on the upstreet side of our station where we treat the water before we send it to our residents. So we fail, fix and send it out.
Yeah.
But that's indeed, they won't let us change it.
Oh, no, we tried changing the site numerous times. They won't let us as well. So anyways. Um, so emergency repairs for twenty twenty five, we've had eight water main repairs to date. Uh, broken sewer main repaired on Cooley Avenue. That was a couple of weeks ago. Um, we repaired that. We repaired that for the paving, but we also did a water main replacement a couple of years ago. So that was the reason for that paving as well. Um, under the parks and recreation division, uh, we purchased a new turf tank painting machine for field line, field lining. It's a little robot. You fill it with paint, you program it. Uh, the guys are 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 doing a great job with it.
Everybody's favorite.
Yeah. So um, it's working out great. You can't leave it alone yet because if it hits anything, it does mess up things. So we're still working out the bugs, but it's a it's a, it's a good.
Line painting next.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so it's greatly efficient, uh, yeah, yeah. Increased our efficiency when it comes to demand on all athletic fields. Weekly field painting schedule implemented, weather permitting. Uh, we've completed our step one through three townwide for fertilization. Step four will be completed. Um, I think it was done uh or it's gonna be done this this upcoming week. Um, continue weekly mowing schedule as conditions allow at our hundred and seventy acres of parkland we maintain um under building facilities. Um, we continue with our preventative maintenance program buildings and schools. These consist of of about ninety five work orders. Energy efficiency upgrades happened at our service building um this last summer, thanks to Rebecca. Uh, we had some heat pumps installed, some AC that the guys desperately needed over there. So um kudos to that. Uh, we continue at three eighty two North Main Street building assessment ongoing with other town buildings. I'm working on that. I've been working on it for a few months now. Um, just doing an assessment of the existing town hall. I'm still working on the new, the the three eighty two property and then all the the other town buildings, um minus the schools. So that'll be forthcoming, I'm thinking with capital. I need to sit down with uh Mr. Christensen and do it and see uh see uh, see if we're we're going in the right direction. Uh, modular replacements at Mountain View School are ongoing. Water main replacement, like you said, was ongoing today. The building demolition has been completed as well. Uh, once the water main is in foundations and the slab on grade and all the um rough plumbing and everything else will be installed. Under our stormwater, we are currently in year number eight of our MS four permit and continues to be stationed for requirements. Excuse me?
We missed transfer station and landfill.
Oh, yes, yes, I did. I'm sorry.
Questions?
Okay, okay.
I thought you skipped over.
Ask sense questions, Ralph. Uh, we continue to comply with all regulatory requirements for testing and reporting uh with mass DEP. Um, this includes fire uh station gas extraction system monitoring and reporting. Uh, Summers Road landfill transfer station compliance reporting, Allen Street landfill, environmental monitoring with PFAS. We continue to move forward with that. Um, and solid waste management reporting with mass DEP on that site as well.
So I believe last meeting or the meeting before.
We talked about it right.
Asked about um waste oil uh containment system. I believe we had allocated funds for a specific one that mass EPA said, well, this is the one we really like and all. And the last time I went to the transfer station, they said, quote unquote, oh, I don't think we're ever taking oil again.
So we never received monies or allocated money for our new uh uh oil receptacle for that facility. We only had money for the remediation of the oil contaminated soil. That was it.
The meeting, that was a miss uh a miscommunication or something because.
I know I did receive from mast DP a sample of a oil containment um unit that they recommend. But this still doesn't take out, and obviously, uh, I'll take it from you guys on how you want to move forward, but it still doesn't take out the element of human error up at the transfer station. Not only would residents need to go up a ladder to get to the top of this this unit and pour the oil in without spilling it anywhere. Um, it's it's a complicated um um way of doing things. So I'm of the mindset of not accepting waste oil up there anymore. But.
So I thought that unit had a protective area. It was basically double. So it had the tank, then it had a
Double wall tank.
In case one of the residents spilled anything. Uh, and that was the whole reason why we were looking at that. So that way there eliminated any of the the ground exposure, because if you did spill something, it was gonna be self-attained.
Right, you're still gonna have that element of, like you said, going up to the unit, it could fall and and spill. I mean, there's there's many different elements. Um, so.
I did look back at the the meeting and it was basically the allocation was for the licensed site professional because we had to do all the 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 remediation work of the oil oil spill. It wasn't to replace the tank.
Right.
Thought we had two separate meetings. One was to replace the tank and one was for the remediation.
I went back to the to the.
And again, I couldn't.
No, 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 no. And I only, when I saw.
We just eating.
If there was a second meeting, then I I went to, I found the minutes of the meeting that we did for the LSP and what, and that was what that one was for. But if if there was a second meeting that we, you think we allocated money for the tank specifically, then I didn't look for a second meeting because I saw the, because I asked Bruce and he said, no, that was just for the remediation cost.
Yeah, because I made a comment that it just didn't seem quite right that the EPA is saying, hey, this manufacturer has this tank and this is the one we want you to use. Because that just doesn't seem like it's
Right.
Open and fair market.
Let me, let me go back and.
And again, I I may be wrong, but um I don't know what the council thinks. And again, this may be something for a future meeting, but I know there was a lot of residents that used that waste oil. And.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah, so.
I think it was always a benefit for the town and that. I mean, if it's something that we can get, let's look at the cost and analyze it.
Keep in mind too, there's a lot of maintenance that goes with that as well. You have to have it pumped out. Um, there's reporting. I mean, there's all kinds of things that go with that. Never mind that, we, anywhere you buy your oil these days, you can return. Never mind that. We, anywhere you buy your oil these days, you can return it back to that, that supplier as well. You go to Napa to buy your oil, change your oil in your car, you can bring it back to them, your waste oil, anywhere you go. I just, like you.
So let's look at it. No, of course, of course.
Just.
Does the um, DPW facility still use waste oil? Do you still have a waste oil burner, right?
Yeah, we don't allow residents to drop it off there. We, we used to now and again, but it got messy as well. It people, you just show up there in the morning, there'd be a bunch of uh, containers of oil. Well, we don't even know what's really in there. So you gotta stop that as well.
I, again, we, we, we have this conversation about the transfer station all the time and, you know, this year we, we, we.
Up the rates.
We up the rates, right? No, but there, there's, there's still, there's still quite the difference between the expense of running the transportation and the revenue that.
Keep in mind as well, we are.
If this is another sort of cost and a reporting thing, we, we, we just, let's just, let's just make sure that it, it still makes sense. And I will check for that other meeting as well to see if that, again, I stopped looking after I found that we were talking about the remediation. So.
Yeah, I believe I shared with you guys the um, tank that was recommended by uh, Tom Spake and everything else. But yeah, I don't believe we ever allocated any money.
We'll double check.
Any further questions? No. Um, under stormwater, I'll go back to stormwater again. Uh, we're currently in uh, year eight of our MS4 permit, continue to meet all requirements. These items include or consist of street sweeping of all roads twice per year. Public education and outreach in our Pioneer Valley Planning Commission helps us with that as well. Catch basin cleanings of sumps that are more than 20% full and annual cleaning requirements. Installations on annual base of B, uh, BMPs, uh, GIs, LIDs annually. Um, example by retention areas, rain gardens, stormwater wetlands, extended dry retention basin, proprietary media filters. On and on and on.
We're uh, more than 20% full now.
Yes. Never mind that, there's.
Percent full, right?
Yes. Now that, um, in year nine, they're talking about uh, putting together a replacement schedule for all our catch basin. I believe the talk was 20% of the catch.
For most.
Every community, which is.
Eight hundred, something like that here?
Yeah. It's ridiculous. So you keep, you go to move forward. Yes, Marilyn.
You know, this is always my issue. Um, okay, the private developments in town that are assessed just like everyone else. And yet there's nothing, no mitigation is done within the property. Now I know contamination can get into the stormwater and can get out into the streets and you may address it there, but um. I just don't think it's fair. I really don't. Um, in fact, this came up at the um, association meeting of the development that I reside in. And there was a neighbor that was concerned, a resident that was concerned that our water bill that the association gets. And then the bills that the individuals get. Um, that there's double dipping. Well, I took care of that and you know, I, I got out my stormwater rates. Um, but anyway, uh, so I know that's not an issue, but it, it, you know, I struggle with the fact that, you know, they want to know what they're getting for this money.
Right.
It's nothing.
Right. A lot of it's, like you said, is all the requirements. It's all the reporting requirements and other things that we do. And never mind that, it's the testing too. We do dry weather testing of, of certain outfalls. And by doing the outfalls um, at these specific areas, you're testing for chemicals and other items that are in the system. So if you do get a hit on a, uh, at an outfall, you then go up to, to the next intersection. And if you have three pipes going into that, you find out which pipe, where it's going um, or coming from, and then you follow that. So it's about finding the point source of the contamination and eliminating those. And I know you don't see that you're getting anything for your money, but we are doing uh, many things in the community. Um, in order to uh, obviously meet these requirements and.
Don't sweep our streets.
Oh, I guess. Sorry, I, Marilyn, I wish I could tell you I'll be there tomorrow.
For you. No, because there's, you know, there's a discussion about um, even is it fair the rate? Should the rate be different?
Right.
For those properties that you can access.
Sure, sure.
Just.
Yep.
It's an ongoing issue for me.
I understand. Thank you.
You listen all the time.
I do. I, I, like I said, I wish I could want private property and help everybody.
School buses come on private property.
Yep. Marilyn.
Thank you, thank you.
Um. Any further questions? No, under stormwater? Um, under fleet maintenance, um, 64 vehicles serviced uh, across the division, 95% of those prevented maintenance. Um, and compliance. Um, we've done a few uh, major repairs in our shop. Um, our truck 22, we did a dump body removed, all rotted repaired, sandblasted, repainted. Um, the truck frame cleaned and painted as well, and all work was completed in-house. Uh, we did the same thing on truck four involved with a motor vehicle accident over the winter, sustained approximately $30,000 in damage. Our insurance cover, uh, company covered all the repair costs, but we performed all the service in-house. Um, our tub grinder at our transfer station uh, repairs um, took almost about a year to repair. Uh, given the complexity of the machine and the ongoing issue with getting parts for older equipment. That we're constantly uh, running into these days. No one's keeping any parts on the shelves anymore. So we're finding ourselves actually going on Amazon for a lot of things these days to get parts. So um, we're trying to get creative when we're doing some of these repairs. Um. Other than that, um, we continue to fleet modernization, modernization plan. Um, summary of next steps, um, strengths, high productivity efficiencies with staffing and proactive maintenance. Um, next action steps, continue infrastructure renewal program, prioritize fleet and facility. Replacement schedules and seek grant funding through Mass DOT, Mass DEP and MVP and Green Community Grants. That's all I have for you this evening.
That's it?
That's it.
Pretty comprehensive.
Awesome.
You got it.
How's the sidewalk plan doing?
Sidewalk is doing good. I'm not sure what the balance is yet. My uh, contractor that just finished up Maple Street and Westwood hasn't even sent me a bill yet. So he's uh, been in the midnight oil, trying to get the last uh, construction projects in. Um, so I'm not sure how much we have left. Um, so.
It, it was awesome seeing Westwood, not only the street done, but then the walks done and turning and come out of Maple Street. Um, a lot, a lot of compliments.
I've received a lot as well um, on that stretch. So very happy. Looks excellent. Thank you.
Good stuff, Bruce. Thank you.
Our perspective. I mean, thank you to you and your team because, you know, even though many people in the community and even at times the council want us to do more and more. To actually look at the report and see all of the projects that are thrown at you on top of the regularly scheduled maintenance.
Yep.
And then these days, all of the compliance and reporting stuff that you guys have to do on top of that, it's a lot of, a lot of ongoing work.
It is. I get a great team and I couldn't do it without them. So thank you to them as well. Thank you.
Thanks for comments.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks.
Appreciate you having.
Think we should just skip over the next item.
Yep.
I move, we, we'll have another day. Another year.
So next under new business is the one of great sadness, but I'll leave it to.
Number 26 will be my last day. Um, and I wanted to make sure I had all my ducks in a row, just with my retirement and all that, my staff, before I announced it to anybody officially. Um, before it appears in the retirement board agenda, my name isn't a retiree. So um, yeah, well, I'm healthy and active. I want to remain that way and do more and see my faraway grandchildren and travel and. See, I'm going to start crying. So, because I love my job. I love everybody I work with, but.
We love you.
Ages and stages, as my daughter says, so I can move on and do different things. And I wouldn't leave if I didn't know I had a talented, uber professional qualified team to just carry on and do what we do. So.
Well, we're going to let you.
Good night.
No, I mean, I think it goes without saying and. For any of us on the council, that we appreciate all of the hard work that you've done.
I think.
For the years, and I think it's apparent to all of us, but even more so now being, having been the president last year and now for this year. Just how much work you do for all of us.
Thank you.
How seamless everything happens. And I think it's one of those positions too, that the public doesn't necessarily see unless they're coming in to. You know, get a license or something.
Right.
Just how much work actually happens in the clerk's office and even all the preparation for the elections and stuff, they just show up one day of the year. But there's a lot of stuff that has.
Yeah, it's been my pleasure. And again, I have just a great team beside me all the time. So, thank you.
I mean, thankfully, it's not like you're leaving tomorrow, but.
Right. Two months.
Much appreciated for all the years that you've served the town.
Thank you.
Which then leads into the second part of the topic is, um, of course, the town clerk is one of those. Probably the most special position in East Long Meadows Town Charter where it also serves as the clerk of the council. So kind of both serving the executive and the legislative branch, whereas all other, you only have one boss.
That's why she's at the cool kids table.
Uh, so then just the part of the charter two, uh, section three dash two, the town manager. Of course, this is one of those positions that the council has veto authority over, in addition to a few others that are enumerated in the charter. And um, there's also. Under paragraph one there where it says that the town manager shall appoint after positions have been advertised once and interviews conducted. And of course, the veto period extends after that. So I think, given that, knowing Genie's retirement notice that the position would be posted and interviews will be conducted. In the very near future. But then I also just wanted to put this on there as well, knowing how the process went with the appointment of the fire chief. And thoughts that counselors had with that process. If, we don't necessarily have to decide or even discuss tonight, but. Something to think about if there's particular ways we wish the process might work or even just knowing what the process that Tom. Or follow uh, for our involvement and information. Feel free to let me know before our next meeting and.
Can I just jump in right now?
Sure.
I've been doing this. Um, would there be any appetite uh, from the town manager to include in the interview process? If nothing else, um, the council president um, doesn't have to be a part of it, but can actually sit in the back and listen to the interviews. And at least that way there privately can give an opinion on what the thought is. Uh, because this position, half of it basically is the clerk of the council. A, again, I don't know ramifications if that's uh, appropriate or not. I know in the past, uh. Um, I believe it was the police chief, um, counselors were let in basically just to hear the process. And again, I don't know how the president feels. I just sort of threw him under the.
No, we, we, again, we, we talked about this briefly and that was a suggestion, obviously it is a special. It is a special position in that it's really the only employee that has this kind of uh, sort of interaction with the council and directly.
Right.
Um, by, by charter. So um, that's certainly something that I, I don't see a problem with.
Sure. And I think that it shouldn't be a surprise to the council when we find out that an appointment's been made and we didn't even know the interviews were going. Right?
Yeah, no, I remember.
Hence the discussion that probably already took place. So. That, that was my only thought process, like I said, and um, I mean, depending on when it happens. Um, Genie probably know most people that apply for the job. And I'm certain she would give you her opinion if you so ask for it. Sorry, Genie, you're going to the bus.
It's okay.
I'm having a good night here.
No, I'd be happy to continue our discussion with Tom and uh, look at the details in terms of that process, but. I think that's a good plan. And then I think the second part of it would just be after Tom does make an appointment. Is then just kind of buttoning up the transition period because of course there's stuff from the town side, but even from the council side, just ensuring continuity there. But I have no doubt that that'll happen. It'll just.
Right.
Yep. Next step. Great. If there's no other thoughts or comments, we can move on. So our last item is action items. Um, our next meeting. Is different. So normally we have our meetings on the Tuesday. But because November 11th is Veterans Day. Our charter says that the meeting will be on Thursday, the 13th. So Thursday, the 13th, on November, the council meeting. If we have it in time, it could be for that first meeting, if not this. November, we could bring up the discussion that we just had, the transfer station and sticker rate math and all that. See if we get some information in time, but some point in November, we'll have that discussion again. Um, we'll have our tax classification hearing.
No, 13th.
I was also planning on bringing up uh, the 250th anniversary celebration to see if we have any ideas that we want to start. Thinking about knowing that that may require appropriation as we enter the budget process following.
Right.
And then I think Tom said the CPC deadline is November 15th, so it won't be for our first meeting, but at some point either later in November or December, I'm sure we'll have. Something that'll come before us then, depending on how long the committee, the actual CPC committee needs to, you know, meet and discuss.
And we'll have, to have time to publish the public hearing notices too.
Right. So it'll probably be December, but depending on the timeline.
Second meeting is the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that one was just penciled in. I don't have anything necessarily scheduled, so if we don't, we won't have to meet before Thanksgiving. But if we do have enough business, we could. But then in December, we only have the ninth scheduled because the next one would be like right before Christmas and too close for everyone, I think. So if there's nothing else that I'm missing, I'll entertain a motion to.
Night. Oh, sorry. Uh, I, I, I can't believe I forgot. Uh, November 11th is Veterans Day. Uh, there's a parade and ceremony in front of town hall. Uh, November 11th, starting at uh, American Legion post through 93. Um, so um. Obviously show up and um, give thanks to our veterans.
Yes, thank you for, I know I RSVP'd, but thank you for the.
I know, me too. Yeah, yeah.
And uh, even the veterans dinner that they have uh, the night before here at the council in age and the 10th. So we have both of those events. Okay, seeing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Then made second and third at any other discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion passes and we returned at 7:51. Thank you.